According to thy holy will, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Clark. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Breeden.
Here.
We do have five members present, so this is a quorum, so we will go ahead and proceed with the meeting. We have one request to amend the agenda, and that is to add a letter from Mark Polisinski from the OKI Regional Council of Governments regarding the annual appointment to the OKI Mr. Breeden? I'm sorry, I thought you raised your hand to make a motion. Mr. Sancker?
Yes, we move to amend the agenda as stated.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden, I'm sorry. Apologize. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the minutes of the October 23rd, 2018, meeting, which were distributed previously by email. It's your pleasure. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I motion that we approve the minutes as of red.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have two requests to address council, but they are not on agenda items, so we will deal with them a little later on. We do have a report, we had a report on the agenda for Finance Audit and Budget Committee, but Mr. Bonzal is driving back from out of town and asked Mr. Clark to read it for him, and Mr. Clark isn't here either, so my suggestion would be that we just perhaps just deal with it at the next meeting. Without objection, we'll just move on. So then we'll have the second reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance consenting to the project ID number 94224, the repair and maintenance of the Section Avenue Bridge over State Route 562, and authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts with the Director of Transportation for the state of Ohio necessary to complete the project, and declaring an emergency. Excuse me, Mr. Thompson.
Move that we have the second reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Sancker. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second reading.
Ordinance consenting to the project ID number 94224, the repair and maintenance of the Section Avenue Bridge over State Route 562, and authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts with the Director of Transportation for the state of Ohio necessary to complete the project, and declaring an emergency.
We'll move on to introductory reading of ordinances. The first is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to approve then and now certificates for the Water Fund 50 to cover the cost of invoices for the Greater Cincinnati Waterworks for 2018 up to $550,000, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Thompson.
Move that we have the first reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Does anybody need an explanation? I did speak to Mr. Stith. Yes, Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. If you could elaborate on the need for this, I know that it was referenced, that this was discussed in the committee, since we didn't have the report out, and I wonder if you could speak to that. I wasn't available to be at that past meeting, so I'm not sure either.
Yes. So, in speaking with Mr. Stith, this did come out of Finance Committee, in doing an analysis of the water fund, it is a little over, it's about $550,000 over the amount, that's estimated to be $550,000 over the appropriated amount. It is, when they did an analysis from January through September of the past two years, it is $424,000 above what it was in 2017 to date, and $500,000 above what the final cost of water was in 2016. The Auditor of State is looking into why there is such a discrepancy. Cincinnati Waterworks did include rates, and if you recall, a couple of years ago, those rates didn't go into effect for the year, and so when Cincinnati raised the water rates again this year, it was compensated by having that extra 2% built in. But at the present time, that increase in rates has not caught up with the bills that are being paid. In addition, Cincinnati Waterworks went to a monthly billing, and so we are paying for water that we have not received payment for yet. So, the 5% increase that was approved earlier this year is, has not been enough to cover the shortfall so far. It's hoped that next year it will be. So, there's a legal way to allow the Auditor's Office to pay bills in an emergency that are above the appropriations, and that's called a then and now. For instance, there was a garage door, I think from the Fire Department, that was broken, and they needed to have it fixed right away. And so Mr. Stith and Marcus Patterson, the Deputy Auditor, are the only two in the city who are authorized to issue a then and now appropriations. Their limit is $3,500. So this then and now certificate is for the emergency payment of the water bill, and it will hopefully be, it will allow him to make the payment so that we don't have a $6,000 late fee. And it does allow him to pay the bill despite the shortcoming in the appropriations. When I asked him if he needed it done tonight, because I thought there might be a problem, he said as long as it was done by the end of the month, when the bill was due, he would be okay. The, as I said, the State Auditor's Office is looking into why there's money in the sewer fund and a shortfall in the water fund. They're going to make sure that some of the water, some of the money that's in the sewer fund wasn't supposed to be in the water fund, but they're doing an analysis of it, and so the State Auditors have approved this. So, that's the explanation. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to thank you for getting the information from me today. I did call you and ask. I also spoke with Mr. Gears and spoke with Mr. Bonzal on his way home. I did call the Auditor's Office, and I did not get a return call. I have lots of concerns, or not lots, but a few concerns on this, is why we weren't notified earlier. Why are we doing a then and then, a then and now, now, and not six months ago, or, you know, when, earlier? I am going to be voting no on this until I can sit down and get the answers that I need, so that I'm comfortable doing this. I'm just getting the answers I needed today. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other discussion? I've just coughed the same thing, sir. It's going around. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. When the auditor said that as long as it was approved later this month, did you have any understanding of if this is approved at the next regular meeting, that would be enough time?
Yes. Yes. So, I mean, I think we could do the first reading tonight if you so chose to do that, or you could, if we, if you all choose not to do that, I mean, this is something that he really needed to get done by next meeting. So, we don't know who's going to be here and who's not going to be here, but in either case, it will take a suspension, even if you have the first reading tonight, it's still going to take a suspension of the rules. My question was if we needed to have special meetings to get it passed quickly, and the answer was no. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Ordinance authorizing the auditor to approve then and now certificates for the Water Fund 50 to cover the cost of invoices for the Greater Cincinnati Waterworks for 2018 up to $550,000, and declaring an emergency.
We'll move on to introductory readings of resolutions, and this is a resolution adopting the Hamilton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Again, if you need background on this, I spoke to Assistant Chief McCabe, and he confirmed my suspicions. The electronic copy was sent to us prior. It's probably about 500 pages. It is the County Emergency Management Association All Hazards Plan that has been adopted by the Hamilton County EMA. Assistant Chief McCabe sat in, we sat on one of the committees on the mitigation plan. It needs to be adopted by all of the communities in Hamilton County if we expect any other community. And things such as the flood a few years ago. So, Assistant Chief McCabe, again, was part of the, was on the committee to help write the, totally supports it, and as long as this is done by the, before the end of the year, he would like to see it by the end of this month. And he could not be here tonight, his daughter had an athletic banquet, but he will be here in two weeks if you need to have him answer any further questions. But, so this is more or less a keeping item that the Fire Department has been in, a part of the writing of this plan. Mr. Sancker.
Mr. President, we have the first reading of the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it would be helpful if we could invite Assistant Chief to come and share a little bit more. I know we received notice, and I wonder if we could have maybe some directed attention on the different roles departments play, and if there's anything residents would need to be aware of as well.
He doesn't intend to be here in two weeks from now, and it's a multi-hazard plan. The Health Departments, any of the agencies that deal with emergency response have these plans in place, but I think it would be a good idea to have a synopsis of it, but he does plan on being here in the next.
Okay, thank you. I thought you were saying he would be. I didn't notice you were saying he will be here.
I'm sorry if I said that. He will, yeah, he will be.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to have the first reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the resolution.
A resolution adopting the Hamilton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
We have no administration reports, but we do have two requests to address council. On the first is Betty Davis. If you could come forward, Ms. Davis, if you would give us your name and address, and you have five minutes to address council.
Thank you for receiving me. I'm Betty Davis, 6352 Montgomery Road, and I'm in apartment B5. In this past December of 17, Kroger in Norwood sold me a couple of bags of potato chips that were dated 2011, and I became very ill. I didn't see it, I didn't have my glasses with me, and I don't have them now, so I can barely see without them, so I didn't see the date. However, I was told, I took a bag back to Kroger, which promised me that they would do a follow-up on those chips, and I never heard, but the manager and the customer service rep was moved to another store, and I didn't see them anymore. So I was sent to your health department, and there I met the BSN, Special Science Degree in Nursing, and we talked for about 20 to 30 minutes, and she wanted to see the chips and the data course, and I let her saw them, and she refused to return them back to me. I felt like she was, you know, taking them from me, and she did, because I only gave them to her to see the date, and it was okay, she wanted to smell them, everybody did, but she didn't give them back. So, but I needed her name, and they wouldn't give me her name. Then she said that they would go to the inspector, and that the inspector would do all the checking that I needed to have done. Of course, I totally agreed, but she didn't give me the chips back, and disagreed. And however, when I finally met him, he said that he threw the chips away because he felt that I was lying, and he called me a liar three times to my face, and I asked for anyone over him. He said there should no one over me. I asked who was over the department in nursing, he said he didn't know. I said, where are your administrative offices? He didn't know that either. That was, and you all, I did leave, you have this, I left it with Assistant Director Law. I met him, and he took this, and we gave it to Counsel Clerk, and I checked with her this past, what is this, last week, and she said that she had given this to you guys, but I brought it this in case you needed copies, and I moved on quickly. And then, so I kind of, you know, moved that to the side, but I started having a problem with Norwood cops following me, stalking me. Finally, I believe it was one of your officers that I was at the bank, Norwood US Bank, and there was a person that came up with the dog, and he let his dog on me, I mean, twice he did it, and the first time I asked him, I said, please get your dog, and he got him and took the leash completely off, and he jumped on me again. I looked for this, what I, he had, his techniques were of undercover officer, and I worked in a course through my internship of every department down there and just bound, and he just, I just felt he was undercover cop, a K-9 officer. So I looked for this man a long time, from, it happened in May, and I couldn't find the person I think he is until September. And I went to the Police Department to report it, talked to Officer Sumner, he took the report, I described the person, so he was the right, well, the person I described, you know, he said, okay, and he took the rest of the information, said that he would call me. That was in September, this is November, and every time they tell me he's going to be present, I show up and he's not there. And then I wrote a letter finally to the chief, and the chief said that he had no idea what I was talking about. I saw two of your desk sergeants, they said they had no idea what I was talking about. Why ask them, could I meet the two cops? Well, I met Sumner, and tried to do a form of complaint on the K-9 officer, but they denied it, and it was ripped up. So, I'm here tonight because, in conclusion, I spoke, I was talking to a lady that I met at an appointment, and she told me that a bag of cookies was opened at Kroger, and that her brother walked up, and the cookies was open, and took one out and ate it, and Kroger charged him with theft. So my chips were stolen, which was far more valuable, because the one bag went back to Kroger. I did it because of McCreeston, and I thought it was the right thing, plus I knew them. And then I go and talk to the BSN, I know her, I was a nurse at one time, and she just took them, and then, you know, they called me a liar, which I know not liar, so that didn't bother me. But however, I need the names of these people. Could you just have, and the K-9 officer, I know who Officer Sumner is, the K-9 officer, I have been there to meet him like three or four times, and they would not let me meet him, because I need a positive ID, which Sumner was supposed to do, and then it was going to be attached to my form of complaint, and it was never done. So I simply need whoever here has the power, I know the mayor has, I don't know who has, the power to, you know, they have this sign posted, in conclusion, we protect our citizens and the police officers. But I share with them, protection is totally different from a cover-up, and this is what I'm getting. So before I have to spend all kinds of money, and I would fight, I would not give this up, because I don't, you know, I don't want to get into what they did to me recently, but all I need is, please let me meet the K-9 officer, I would meet him wherever he want to. I don't have any questions for him, I just want to see him, and I would like for you to ask the chief to speak with his staff, and keep up with the information that comes into his office, and I thank you so very much for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Brian Daniel Schu.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've got a few will come forward, you'll have, give us your name and address, and then you have five minutes.
Okay, I can't keep it to five minutes, I gotta watch here. My name's Brian Daniel Schu, and currently I'm temporarily staying in Evans, 36th Street, 33 Evans Avenue. I'm planning to come back to Norwood, I've had deep roots here, but, okay, I start this five minutes here, I'm gonna make this real brief as possible. I actually wrote a research paper on this in college, Cincinnati State Community College. There were, the story happened in Cincinnati during my lifetime, that the United States Supreme Court said that Hanukkah is an all-American holiday, because the back of these are freedom fires, basically for religious freedom. We all have the right to serve God according to the dictates of our own conscience, the way we think the right way to do it is. And immediately, one of the local rabbis petitioned to put a menorah on Cincinnati Fowl Square, which they granted, and immediately after that, 38 different ethnic and cultural groups petitioned to put their icons on Fowl Square. The scary thing was, the 38th one was to burn a cross with a Q Club's lamp, and that's when Cincinnati Council threw their hands up, like, we just don't have time and space for all these things. So, they denied all 38 of them, and all that was left was the menorah and the Christmas trees. So the Christians put the Christmas trees up, were like, well, Rabbi, take the menorah down. And the rabbi says, fine, if you take the Christmas trees down. So it was a standstill, a complete standstill. And I don't know if they ever did put an electric menorah back up again, or, I didn't keep too close track of it. I don't know what year that all happened, but I got the copy of the essay I wrote for Cincinnati State, I wish I had a copy with me, I could submit it to you, but, so I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want to incriminate myself or anything, I don't do that. I was so mad one year in Norwood, I'd say, I'm gonna take a glass, spray pan, take off the face of Jesus in a version of Mary, and my rabbi says, no, we don't do that anymore. That's thousands of years ago. Thousands of years ago, Hebrews would go around trying to destroy other people's icons, which Moses said, he commanded it, but we just don't do that anymore. That's thousands of years ago, you know what I'm saying? I respect everybody's freedom of religion, you know? I want to make it clear, I'm not a military officer. The Vietnam Vet that gave me these officer insignias, he was not a commissioned officer, he was only enlisted, so I'm not, I can't go to a military base and pull any weight or anything. I can't tell anybody what to do. So that's my request. The first night of Hanukkah is December 2nd. I'm gonna try to get the Jewish Federation to come up with the money. Right now, the Jewish community's broke, pretty much. A lot of people believe that Jews are rich, and they're not, and I'm not even claiming to be a Jew, I'm just of the Jewish faith. Yeah, a lot of people, if you're Jewish, you must be rich, right? Well, my rabbi collects welfare benefits, he has a nonprofit status, and he solicits charitable contributions through postal mail. He has five assist boys, and he's literally broke. In fact, that's the way most ultra-orthodox rabbis are these days, they're broke. They sell our Jewish hospital to Christians, and we don't even have a homeless shelter for Jewish people anymore. They're having a hard time buying kosher meals for poor Jewish UC students, because 10 hours a meal, and it's the same thing as ramen noodles, it's just kosher, it just costs more. So, that's my request. Allow me, if I can come up with the money, to put an electric menorah somewhere in the
Now, if you want to submit a request to the Law Department, the council will get it to the mayor and the Safety Service Director who oversees the public spaces in Norwood. I'm not sure exactly what holiday displays may be up, but if you want to put together, send in a request, you know, they'll take a look at it and figure out if it's going to work.
So now, who do I submit this request to?
If you just, we'll make it easy for you. If you put together a request, and there is an office right outside here, the Clerk of Council's office, if you just drop it off there, she's in there about 9:00 to 3:00, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Drop off that request, and we'll make sure that it gets to the appropriate people. So the mayor and the Safety Service Director are in charge of the public places.
The Safety Service Director and the-
And the mayor.
And the mayor. Yeah, it's right next door in the Clerk of-
That's the Clerk of Council, she will get it to, she'll get it to the right people, because sometimes they're in and out a lot.
Let me just write that down real quick, because I'm, I'm gonna forget that, so I want to talk to the mayor, submit a request to the mayor and service public.
His name, it's the Service Safety Director.
Okay.
It's one person, and the mayor. But you can drop off the request, the written request, to the Clerk of Council's office, and the secretary there, her name is Pam Hill, and we'll let her know that your request is coming, and she can get it to the right people.
And go to Clerk of Council?
Mm-hmm.
Well, um-
But if you want to address the request, I want to address it to the mayor.
Looks like I got 30 seconds, and I only have one thing to say, and that is that I'm buying two bricks for two Norwood citizens who died. Cornelius Francis James, he served in World War II to save the Jews, and Mason Bishop Sessler, served in Vietnam and subsequently drained himself to death. So I want to let you know, I'm gonna buy those two bricks, I've been talking to Dave the veteran who runs the park.
Dave Benz.
And I want to buy those two bricks, it's gonna cost more than 20 hours a brick, it's going up in price. My last request would be help Dave get his legal issues resolved, so we can buy more bricks for the park. So hey, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Mr. Sancker.
Yes, Madam President, under unfinished business, I would like to move that under the standing committees, that we move the Finance Audit and Budget Committee report to our next regular council meeting.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, motion carries. Any other unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two items, someone could do them one at a time, in case others have them as well. One is, at our last regular meeting, we heard from the leadership of the Gem of the Highlands, as well as the Off Pike Market, they were sharing about upcoming, the upcoming inaugural run, and inviting us to participate, and I just wanted to express, I had a great time, it was really cold.
Yeah, it was really cold.
And yet, it was a burst of sunshine, lots of energy, and I'm grateful, I just wanted to publicly express my gratitude for the persons who were involved in pulling that together, their willingness to come share with us, and keep inviting us to be involved. It was great, a great path forward for the city, so just wanted to acknowledge, that happened, y'all.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson?
I can wait, I think there was another.
Oh, Mr. Breeden, you had something?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Sancker?
Yes, Madam President, I didn't know if you had any additional update on the checks for the retirees, about going back and forth, or if you're gonna bring that up later under unfinished business.
Well, we can talk about now, it's certainly unfinished, that's for sure. The bounce checks were replaced finally, along with all of the fees, they were mailed out. We are still dealing with renovation for some of the other claims that are still pending through their organization, and trying to get things transferred over to the new SNS Healthcare Strategies, who will be taking over that administration. I am awaiting a welcome letter from SNS Healthcare, so that I can include it in the mailing to all of the retirees with the nominees, people who were nominated for the committee, the administrative committee. As you know, according to the ordinance that you all passed, the retirees' healthcare applications and things will be sent by and reviewed by the administrative committee, two of which will be appointed by the members, the membership, and then three appointed by the mayor. So we did have nominations, I confirmed with people who were nominated, several of them said, no, thank you, but we do have about four or five, I think there's five, four or five nominees who agreed to serve. So as soon as we get that welcome letter, I'm gonna do the mailing all at once, that will inform the retirees where to send their future claims, so it's a work in progress, it is certainly unfinished business. We've, additional people got some checks in the mail, we got a couple of claim forms from renovation in the last week, they're in the mayor's office and the Safety Service Director's office to be reviewed, so- Director's office to be reviewed, so we're over $200,000 that we've paid so far this year, and there are plenty more claims to be paid. Yes.
When it's time to put that mailing together, to get it stuffed and in the mail, uh, let me know, we can help volunteer to assist you on that.
That would be wonderful. [laughing] I got envelopes ready to go, but I'm waiting on the letters, and, uh, so we can have one big party. I, um, I did find several people who were dead on the list, as I told you. I have one person that I cannot find, um, and we can chat afterwards, um, that was a Norwood resident, and it came back and said that she no longer lives there. And I'm just having a difficult time, everything came back from her, so I feel badly that she doesn't know about this, but, um, everyone else we've managed to track down, so... And the SNS, um, had, uh, they sent me the registration list of everybody, and we knocked people, you know, people that, um, they had wrong addresses and things, so we updated all of that. And again, Julie Topol has been, um, assisting us in getting things changed, so at no cost to us, by the way. And I'll just reiterate that, um, renovation was charging us 30, 30 or $32 to administer the third-party administration for C9 and the medical claims, and SNS will be charging us $8.50, so another savings. Thank you for asking, Mr. Sancker. Any other unfinished, Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to, um, revisit, uh, the comments that Ms. Davis just brought before us. I am very disturbed by what she shared. Um, I noticed there was some note-taking going on. I do want to acknowledge, I did receive your, your letter, Ms. Davis, and did place a phone call to the number that was on there. And so, um, would be happy to talk with you again, especially now that we've had a chance to see you in person. Um, I'm not sure, so this is purely a question at this point, Madam President, were you intending to respond on behalf of council to the questions she posed?
I was going to contact the chief and have him get in touch with her and see if we can provide the information that she needed.
Okay, thank you. I, I feel like for what she shared, it was real important for us to voice our response, and I just wasn't certain, so just wanted to ask. I would also, um, request that if needed, um, we consider putting this, this address to council and committee of the whole, so that we might, if needed, be able to confer with our law department. Because what was shared, to me, has some implications, where she may be wanting to seek legal counsel, and maybe appropriately so. So I just want to make sure it's on record, we heard her complaint, and, and we are going to do what is in our initial first-step power to, to seek some resolve to what she said.
I, I would hope that, um, this could hopefully be resolved by the departments involved. I'd like to take that as a first step.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Thompson?
Yes, just wanted to announce that we're going to, um, have our Committee of the Parks, Rec Streets and Infrastructure, um, meeting on November 27th, which is the day of the next council meeting, and we'll do it from 6:15 to 7:15. Um, just seems to be a good time to get people together. Um, this one is, we actually postponed the last one that we were going to have last time, so this is just to make up for, uh, the agenda items we missed on that last date.
Thank you. So 11:27 at 6:15 here in council chambers.
That is correct, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I want everybody to consider executive session and how we handle that. Um, we're in fiscal emergency, and I see us as we're sitting here, and last week, or last meeting, it was midnight. Um, and we're paying people who are coming to speak before us, um, to sit and wait. And they wait sometimes for hours, and we're probably, I don't know what we're paying them, we're paying them by the hour, I'm sure. I want, I would like for council to see if they would consider, if we do have people here for executive session, that we move, um, executive session up after the reports of standing committees, so we're not paying people just to sit here and wait for our meetings, which can be quite lengthy sometime.
Mr. Sancker?
I understand the, uh, the reason for it, and I would say, if indeed we knew, typically we do know in advance that the request to go into executive session, um, and the only drawback to it would be, I mean, granted, we're, the people that were, are here to address us, um, could take, as we well know, the last time, it could take a couple hours, of which Betty would be sitting out in the hallway for two hours waiting for us to resume the meeting.
Yep.
So I do think there may be a happy medium somewhere, um, to, to be able to address executive session and the issues that are, you know, going to be in the executive session. But I, I, I don't know, if we put it right at the very beginning of the meeting, and then we, you know, we go in for an hour, an hour and a half, and then anybody that's here for any presentations or any, um, they would be waiting, or we do any special presentations or something, and then move into executive session before we go into the formal business of council. I guess those would be a couple things to consider, but I just, um, it's kind of a double-edged sword, except we're not paying the citizens to be here. We're-
I think the first thing might be to, to see if we indeed are paying somebody to sit here.
If indeed-
If we're not paying them to sit here, then-
Hey, let them sit here.
Then let them sit here.
Correct, ma'am.
And I'll be happy to-
But I do-
-check that out, but-
I do, you know, see the, the reason for it, so, but you just need to check on that.
Yeah, let me check on that first, and then maybe we can go from there. I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're very welcome. Any other new business? Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to take, um, a second and to remember the families, the Pike County, um, and, um, I want to congratulate, uh, the Pike County Sheriff's Department and their due diligence. Uh, just, um, I thought it was important to mention that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? The mayor asked me to attend the rededication of the tank, um, at Victory Park on Veterans' Day on Sunday. Um, it was originally scheduled for 11 o'clock, which was the date, the time of the Armistice Day, but it was moved to 1:00 since it was a Sunday and lots of people were in church. Um, so it was just a brief ceremony, but I can tell you that the folks that were there, the, um, the Brotherhood of Tankers were, um, quite happy, um, at the way that the tank turned out. They gave us some interesting information, that it was a four-man crew that would be in that little tiny tank. Um, one was, one would be the driver, one was the gunner, one was the loader, and the other one was like, uh, the, um, officer in charge of it. Um, they said that the computer optics and all that stuff were still in place, along with a foot and a half of water on the bottom of the tank, where it apparently had leaked. And so, first thing they had to do was drain all the water out of it. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that they were, um, very grateful. Pete Tuppi was there, um, grateful for the, um, cooperation of the City of Norwood, and asked to express their thanks, um, for the cooperation, and I told him, you know, we certainly appreciated their help, and it was just a reminder that our freedoms are never free, so it was a nice half an hour, 40-minute ceremony, so. Just wanted to report that to you. Any other new business?
I got a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Braden?
Um, was there any, any steps to take to, to keep that from happening?
[laughing] Yes, they've-
Again?
They've sealed it up, and unfortunately, um, they replaced the, uh, front by where the turret thing turns around and the gun is. There is a piece of, um, it's really interesting, there's a piece of, um, I don't know, some kind of heavy fabric, canvas or something, and they saw a squirrel get in the tiny little thing and get up into the turret, and so they were like, "Wow, the squirrel has found a home." So they were gonna come back and work on that on Monday to make sure that they, they thought they had everything sealed up, and there was one little tiny place that the squirrel got in, so, yes, they did take, uh, they did take steps to seal that up.
Thank you.
Um, hopefully, it's all taken care of, and we won't have to worry about that again. Any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to communications, then. The first is, um, from the Ohio Department of Liquor Control regarding a liquor license transfer for the Marathon Station. And these were sent out to-
Other than the departments?
All of the departments, um, police, fire, tax, building, health?
And I do not know if we've received responses on them yet. And the date is December 3rd.
So the date is December, the, December the 3rd, so we do have time, if you want this to take no action and reappear on the next, um, agenda, if you would like to do that, to make sure that we, before we take action or not take action, um, to see if we get responses back, Mr. Sancker?
Madam President, I would recommend that we do wait till, we do have all the responses back from the appropriate departments-
Refer to the next meeting.
Before moving on it, yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines for October 2018.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of October 2018. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Sancker?
I recommend that the, um, communication, the letter from the mayor be received and filed.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mark Polisinski regarding the appointment to OKI.
Dear ladies and gentlemen, the term of your current representative on the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments Board of Directors for 2018 will expire upon convening the Board of Directors of the Council on January 10th, 2019. In order for the new Board of Directors to be duly convened at the Board of Directors meeting, it is requested that your agency submit the name of its appointment to the OKI Board of Directors. The OKI Articles of Agreement require that persons representing counties, cities, townships, or planning agencies must be selected by the governing body of that organization. When your agency has taken official action to designate its representative, please return the enclosed form to the secretary. Your reply is needed as quickly as possible, as quickly as possible as, and no later than January 4th, 2019. Representation on the OKI Board of Directors is not a commitment to fund OKI. Non-federal monies to operate OKI are obtained mainly from participating counties through funding agreements. The purpose of local representation on OKI is to assure that work on behalf of the region is responsive to local needs. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Mark R. Polisinski, CEO, Executive Director.
I currently serve in that of... Yes, Mr. Sancker?
I was gonna recommend that the letter be received and filed, and that our current representative be recommissioned for another year.
We can get a nice ceremony for that.
[laughing] All right. Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. They're interesting meetings, I must say. Uh, has there any other, the motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter and to renew the appoint, my appointment as your representative, is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And the interest of sustainability, do you think it would be helpful if anyone else joined you at these meetings?
I don't think so. You were there, you, do you keep, Mr. Moore, he, Mr. Moore used to attend them.
Right, and essentially, most of the decision-making is made at smaller committee meetings, the, the, our representative is there for the massive vote on, here's the project, we've all figured out what it's gonna be, this is what we're gonna be doing three years from now, and two years from now, um, and so having an extra representative, unless there's some particular issue, is, there's really not much to come out of that, so.
So as a point of clarity, our representative does not serve on any committees, just the general meet, body?
There are, there's a general meeting, and then there's an executive committee, and our, uh, we, we, our, I do not, and I don't think anyone from Norwood has ever been on the executive committee. There are certain, um, requirements, there have to be so many folks there who are, um, from counties, so many from large cities, and then there's a very smaller representation of smaller cities and villages, and they have nominating, nomination, nominating committees, and that's, as Mr. Moore says, that work is done primarily from folks who have been there for a long time, who know the system. And quite frankly, it's people whose jobs are dedicated to doing that kind of work, that they have the, the time and the energy and the resources to do the kind of work that it requires to be on that executive committee. So as, it, just as Mr. Moore stated, it's more of a, um, this is what the committee's decided, they all have, they have bylaws, and they work within frameworks of awarding money by, um, a review committee that has points, and they are very honest about scoring of projects and things like that, um, that are submitted. We just went through, um, at the last meeting, went through, um, rounds of funding for 2020, and there were like 70 communities or different agencies who had submitted funding for various different grants, and they literally showed the scoring and who was, who was awarded money and who was not, and so all that has to be, um, approved by the entire OKI committee. So the executive board, um, does most of the work in, in the committees, and the, um, I, I attend the executive committee meeting, uh, the executive meetings, I don't, I'm not, I do not attend the committee meetings. I'm only required to go every two months, but I go every month and try to keep up to date on the things that are discussed and upcoming opportunities that perhaps we could take advantage of. Disappointed that the Wasserman Way Project didn't get funded for next fiscal year, um, because their scoring was just below the cutoff, was heartbreaking, so, um, it's a very open and honest, um, board, they award millions and millions of dollars. Um, and they did have a, uh, conference on freight here in Cincinnati, the Ohio Conference on moving freight, um, and I did volunteer for a couple of days down at that conference, so I am involved, but, uh, don't have a vote. Yes, Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I seconded the nomination. I want to make sure you're willing and want to do it.
Oh, it's, I have the time, and I'm willing to do it if you all want me to.
And say thank you very much for the time you spend doing it.
You're welcome. Thank you for trusting me to do that. So the motion on the floor, then, is there any other discussion? Motion on the floor, then, is to receive and file the letter and to, um, continue my appointment to the OKI Board. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have two absent members. Mr. Braden?
I would like to make a motion to excuse our absent members.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? I hope Chrissy Clark is re, um, recuperating well from her emergency appendectomy, so, um, good luck to the Clark family. Motion on the floor is to excuse the absent members, call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Mr. Braden?
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, this meeting is hereby adjourned.